At this time, I'd like to call our August 2025 Planning Commission meeting to order. If I could have roll call, please.
Nonna Reese.
Here.
Dana Camp.
Right here.
Bill Chancellor.
Here.
Jennifer Lover.
Here.
Vanessa Eccles.
Here.
Joseph A. Strop.
Here.
Jennifer Stevens.
Here.
Oscar Mosley.
Here.
Walker Davis.
Here.
Thank you. Before we start, I'd like to give a brief overview of the process for this planning commission will be presented with agenda items by the staff. A public hearing will be opened as appropriate, and this will be the opportunity for you to address the commission about the agenda item at hand. We want everyone to be heard, and we would ask you to keep your comments to five minutes and relevant to the case at hand. After everyone has spoken, I'll close the public hearing. Once closed, the public will not have the opportunity to answer any further question or respond to comments, but will give us the opportunity to hear from both staff as well as the applicant in response to your questions and concerns that have come up during public hearing. The commission will vote based on state and local laws and the City Comprehensive Plan 2030. In addition, I'd like to summarize our role and responsibility related to the approval of subdivision plats. By Alabama statute, a commission such as ours is the final approval authority for subdivision plats. This commission acts as an administrative body and is bound by the limitations of our state laws, city zoning ordinance, and subdivision regulations. While public hearings are required on most plats, this commission's authority is limited to confirming that the plat meets or exceeds the specific requirements codified in our laws and regulations. Finally, the Planning Commission is an advisory board to the City Council, except in the case of subdivision plats. All other decisions will be made by City Council after consideration of the Planning Commission's position. Thank you, and please remember to sign in and state your name and address for the record. At this time, I would like to open citizens communication. If you would like to come and speak before us on anything not on tonight's agenda, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll close citizens communication. We don't have any old business tonight, correct? Okay. At this time, we'll move toward the consent agenda, but first I need to remove item number two, annexation of Sand Hill Acres, redivision of Lot 1. May I have a motion to remove that?
Motion to remove number two, annexation of Sand Hill Acres, redivision Lot 1.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And at this time, I'm going to recuse myself of said annexation, Sand Hill Acres, revision of Lot 1, and pass the gavel to Vice Chair Dana Camp.
Okay. Thank you. All right, this involves the annexation of Sand Hill Acres, redivision Lot 1. And so if whoever has this will.
Yeah. All right, so. All right, so the action requested was a recommendation for the City Council to annex approximately 14.7 acres at 4474 Sand Hill Road. All right, so like we discussed earlier this week in the packet meeting on Monday, staff just had some concerns just with annexing this property since the property in the green that has the blue, I don't want to call it a squiggle, but it's a driveway, in it, they're both the same owner. And so right now, there's a residence on that property that's already annexed into the city. Annexing this one would then allow for this to be 20 acres, which then could be subdivided into multiple lots. And so staff's concern is just with if we're, if we're going to annex land like this where the only viable, I guess, path forward for that, like the only reason to do that would be to, for future development. Staff would like to see adequate frontage and like to see a preliminary plat that works instead of annexing and then staff being compelled to look at something that didn't work. And I guess right now, this already is in our planned jurisdiction. They would have to comply with our subdivision regulations anyway, but just kind of like we've discussed before, the city is under no obligation to annex anything, even if it meets, even if it is contiguous, even if it is in the optimal boundary, even if the annexation priority is high, et cetera. The city is not obligated to annex any land. It's always just a decision if the city decides to do it or not. And then also just in our annexation policy, staff can recommend a delay or a hold for any additional information to provide context to what the intent is with any annexations as well. And so that is what we're exercising here is that we're asking the applicant to provide a compliant preliminary plat if there's any future, if there's any intention to further subdivide this beyond what's existing.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, do we typically ask applicants there being annexed in for this type of information? I don't recall that.
So normally, we do actually. So when we get, so that's why you guys never get massive, I'd say like the people who request the annex and there's usually not a preliminary plat associated with it. It's because it's either a nonconforming lot, like under an acre, or it's like, no, I have no plans, I'm just kind of coming into the city. But like, that's why, like you guys would never see a dare or, you know, the corner at Farmville Lakes or anything like that. When anything comes in that can be future subdivided and we think that there is going to be development, it is something that we ask for. So that's why oftentimes you guys will see that when annexations are not on consent agendas because there are items associated with it, whether that be a rezon, whether that be a preliminary plat that follows behind it. As I said, staff is just, we want to make sure there's a compliant preliminary plat behind it. That way, if there's a, the property does change hands, that way we're not dealing with someone who is pretty feisty about, no, I was sold this or I bought this under the intent that I can subdivide and I can do all these things and that we wouldn't have any dealings with them. And then, as it wouldn't obligate us to do anything, it's just one of the things on our end of just kind of cleaning up transactions. That way, there's an understanding from, you need to, if you're going to subdivide this, then there needs to be more done than what's existing.
Is this in the optimal boundary?
Yeah, this is in the optimal boundary, I guess. Next map, please. Next one. There we go.
It is on our pack, in our packet, it says it's a low priority. Can you tell us why? The reasons why?
Yeah, so just kind of like we talked about, the annexation priority list was done over a decade ago. It's one of the things that we're going to be looking to redo in the next coming year. But the current annexation priority reflects viability for development. So what that means is can utilities be extended to it? City utilities specifically. Is it within, I guess, what school district, like, do they currently attend? What does that do for bus routes? Is it developable? And I guess that's kind of what, what's topography look like, et cetera. And then also just kind of what is it adjacent to? How far is it away to get emergency services to and all these other things? And so the low or versus high priority list for the city just kind of speaks to the proximity and viability of development. And this is low because it's out on Sand Hill Road. It's not in the middle of Sand Hill Road, but Sand Hill Road is generally pretty far, just kind of out towards the Society Hill side of it. And there's never going to be extensive utilities out here, like, I guess, this is already outside of the city's water district. This is, and I guess also wouldn't be sewer here either. And so the viability of development is very low. It's not like there's ever going to be quarter acre lots out here. This, this wouldn't happen. So that's pretty much what the low annexation priority means is that there's, this is not viable for development.
But are there sufficient services out there to warrant annexation?
I mean, when you, when you say warrant annexation, I guess for, you know, as I said, people can petition annex and everything out here is pretty much rural. Like, you know, there are some commercial businesses along Sand Hill, but I guess outside of that, like, we're never really, I guess, just due to the taxation structure of the state of Alabama, I mean, the property taxes aren't never going to be that big of a push for the city on a residential side like this. So I mean, the incentive, the incentives aren't there for to annex a single, single-family house from the city side.
I see that the school system had no comments written.
Yeah, and so, and so pretty much the school district stance on that is a standing binary position. So if it is in the optimal boundary, yes. If it was outside the optimal boundary, no. They got away from providing individual answers because people would then call the school board if the school board ever expressed, no, beyond, like on an individual case. And so it was something that they wanted to extract themselves from, so they just provided blanket statement. If it's in the optimal boundary, they're okay with it. If it's outside of the optimal boundary, they are not okay with it. I think there were some nuances to that, like if they ever have to cross 280, they would strongly advise against adding more houses that they have to cross 280 to get to.
Any other questions, commissioners?
Justice, refresh my memory about access to Sand Hill Road. They do not have access now, and if they divided it, they would have to get access, correct?
Yeah, so this is a remnant of, I guess, what staff discovered was it was an illegal subdivision. So this, so as you see, this lot doesn't have any frontage, as I said, but it's the same owner to the property in the green, just to the north of it. And so it was something that if they did want to do a consolidation plat, this plat would then gain access to Sand Hill Road and would have the minimum 70 feet. But like, from an approach standpoint, actually subdivide, they'd either, to subdivide and get six lots or seven lots off of this, you wouldn't get, like, you wouldn't do flag lots to do it. They would have to build a road that would then go the length and go all the entirety to give each lot enough frontage. So that, and then, so that's what we would need to see on the, on a preliminary plat, so.
But they could do, they could do basically three acre lots.
Right, 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 right. It would just be, they would have to, they'd have to dedicate the right of way for there to be a road, turn lane, and kind of all of that. And so it's just one of the things, just from now, sometimes one of the things that we get, sometimes people submit flag lot requests in situations like this, and that'd be a hard no, that wouldn't happen. Because I mean, the entirety of this would need to be a flag lot. It's not like they would, they could do this with one or two, it would be all of them.
Any other questions, commissioners? Okay, do I have a motion?
All right, I'll make a motion to approve NX case AX 2025-007.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Want to do a roll call?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Dana Camp?
No.
Bill Chancellor?
No.
Jennifer Lover?
Yes.
Vanessa Eccles?
No.
Joseph A. Strop?
No.
Jennifer Stevens?
No.
Oscar Mosley?
No.
Walker Davis?
What was the count?
Seven to one.
Seven to one. It's denied. Ms. Reese?
Thank you. Now we have remaining items on the consent agenda that need to be approved. Packet meeting minutes from July 7th, regular meeting minutes from July 10th. An annexation and two final plats.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. New business.
All right, good afternoon. This request is an annexation request for approximately 5.83 acres located off of Lee Road 15, also known as Persimmon Drive. As you'll see here, it is located just next to the lots that were considered for a couple of requests last month off Persimmon Drive. It is currently within the optimal boundary, I mean, surrounded by the optimal boundary. Properties to the north and the east are within the city limits as well, so it's contiguous on two sides. The annexation priority is high with this property. And with that, I will answer any questions that y'all may have regarding this annexation.
As an annexation, does not require a public hearing? Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Move to approve AX 2025-008.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the second request is regarding that same property, same boundaries and all, the 5.83 acres. And this is a request to rezone that property from the rural that it just gained, pending the annexation approval, to industrial. So like I said, it's the same exact site with the same exact boundaries. The future land use designation, and I guess I didn't put it in there, but the future land use designation designates this as light industrial, similar to the lots that are to the east of this property. And this is intended to accommodate some commercial support uses. With that, I can answer any questions about this rezoning pretty straightforward.
At this moment?
So, why do we use the term light industrial when that's not in our table of general regulations? I understand the intent is to not have any manufacturing, but there isn't anything that's, that I can find.
Light industrial, the reason I pointed out that light industrial accommodates a lot of commercial support uses, it's, they're synonymous in a way, is what I would say. The future land use designation, we use the words light industrial, but the intent of the light industrial, future land use is to accommodate uses like commercial support uses. It specifically goes into detail about wholesale warehouses and services such as exterminators, plumbers, et cetera. So it's really just meant to keep the intent of an industrial use and something a little more intense, but not as intense as industrial separation.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a simply manufacturing or anything like that.
No, no, no.
Yeah, and I think also kind of hours, hours of operation. You have some things in the, in the other industrial parks that are 24/7. Like if you drive on Webster Road late, late at night, some part of that industrial park is still running. So, just, just the distinction between intensity of use, but also hours of operation, and then also, like you said, industrial is normally something reserved for manufacturing, and this is just much more like a commercial support use.
Thank you. This does require a public hearing. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for Persimmon Drive Property Development Project Rezoning from rural to industrial. If you would like to speak on this agenda item, please come forward.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
I just have.
Your name and address, please.
Oh, name and address. Elaine Jordan, 445 Lee Road 15.
Thank you.
Okay. I just had, I want to get some clarity on the, so letter, we received, my husband and I, we received the certified letter. And so, but on the latter part, it has case CU 2025-045. And then on the actual writing property, the map part of it, I think it has 46.
Yes, ma'am, those are the next two agenda items.
But I'm just saying, is it, is it anything different?
Same property. It's all the exact same property.
Clarity on it.
Yeah, I think the next two actually require a public hearing as well, if you'd like to speak now or then.
No, it's not about speaking. I was just concerned about the, the letter that was sent that when it says the first request, that was on the 011 part. And then when the second request, then it has the CU 2025-046. And, but here, you know, on this part, right here on the map, it has the 2025-045. So they didn't give us anything with the 46, so I was just concerned about, is it anything different?
Same property, different actions.
Yeah, but I just wonder why we didn't have, you know, I didn't get one with the 046 on there too. That's all I'm seeing.
Okay.
I did receive a certified letter, so.
That's good.
Y'all happy? Nervous like, what's going on? All right, and that's, that's it.
And thank you. Please sign in, if you will. Please sign in, if you will.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is my first planning meeting, so.
Well, welcome, welcome. Would anyone else like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, rezoning request.
Move to approve, RZ 2025-011.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, this next request regarding the same property, the three zero one Lee Road fifteen, also Persimmon Drive. This one is for conditional use approval for a commercial support, for commercial support uses, specifically contractor warehouses and offices. As you can see, like we've seen the last two requests, it's surrounded by either properties that are single family outside of the city, in rural, or NC six, and then some light industrial uses as well. It's right next, it's the property to the west of the contractor storage yard and warehouse request that came before you a month ago. But this request is similar but slightly different because it's proposing approximately one thou- thirteen thousand eight hundred square feet of total building, where the largest warehouse would be about twelve thousand square feet, and the two smaller would be around nine hundred. It's different from last month because they are not requesting a storage yard use. So everything would be stored and operating within the buildings that are being requested.
The thirteen thousand including this new one and the old, or just the new one?
Just the new would have that square footage. But the site plan appears to be consistent with the language in our zoning ordinance and the future land use designation. And that's all banking on the rezoning approvals and everything that came before, but assuming those would be approved, then it would be consistent. So I can answer any questions, and I think the applicant's also here, if y'all have specific questions.
That curb cut already exist?
I don't think so, but Dan would be able to confirm that.
Does the curb cut exist?
The house out there, it looks like a driveway line, sort of close to that point, so without measuring and scaling things off, I'm not sure.
Point of clarification, the two smaller buildings are actually nine thousand square feet, not nine hundred.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry about that.
It's in the report that way, too. That's what caught my eye.
Oh, you're right.
From your understanding, this property is not Paul Rayburn's business.
It would be tied to that business. All these lots are going to be required to consolidate using a plat before DRT approval is granted. I think that was one of the comments in the conditional use, but it would be connected to that business, but again, not used as a storage yard, it's just more of a internal. And I, like I said, I know the applicant's here, and if they could provide any further clarity as to what they were intending, then feel free.
Thank you. This does require a public hearing for conditional use for Persimmon Drive Property Development Project. I'd like to open the public hearing now, if anyone would like to speak on this agenda item. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, you have questions for the applicant? Or thoughts?
Move to approve KCU two oh two five dash oh four five?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
You can lower that if you need to. You know, I can't see anybody.
All right, so this item is a request to prezone approximately fifty-three and a half acres to development district housing. Property is located on the north side of West Farmville Road in between Pepperwood Trail and Auburn Lakes Road. There is a subsequent request to apply the planned development district overlay to the same property. The future land use plan designates this property as rural, which brings a density of one dwelling for every three acres. The plan, proposed plan with this rezoning brings a hundred forty-six single-family detached units, which is not consistent with that designation, and DDH brings five and a half dwelling units an acre. So there's the plan. I can answer any questions regarding this item, if you have one.
Okay, pre-zoning request. Pre-zoning does require a public hearing, so if y'all do not have questions at this point.
Well, I, I, I do. What, what's the advantage of a pre-zoning?
Oh, great question, Oscar. It's, it's, it's so nice to ask very relevant questions, just kind of while you have time, so. Pre-zoning is just kind of exactly what it is. So normally on the, on the agenda, you'll have the annexation that goes before the rezoning, right? Because the city, I guess as a rule, we cannot zone, we do not have zoning control or anything that is not in the city. We have subdivision power. And it's, so those things are in our planning jurisdiction, but we do not have the ability to zone them. And so in the state of Alabama, this is a state of Alabama thing, I was, this is something I learned when I moved here. In the state of Alabama, you can request that you get a decision on the zoning of something, on a project, before you annex it. And I'm not talking like on the same meeting. You have six months after you get pre-zoning approval to then annex it, because what people, I guess, to property owners. Well, if the city can only make, give me an authority, give me a decision on the zoning of my property if it's in the city, then that means I must take the risk, annex my property, but then they can still tell me no. And so as the, as a solid two property owners in the state of Alabama, they can get a decision on the zoning, the potential zoning of their property, if the city would support their project prior to annexing it. And then that being, have, dealing with the permanence of being annexed, whether that be taxes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And so it is something that applicants can ask and request that their property get pre-zoned. And so what that does is flip the order of things on the agenda. So on, in the planning commission meeting, there will be the rezone, the zoning questions first, and same thing in the council meeting. That way, the applicant can get a decision. And so if the zoning, if, so if the zoning requests fail, there is no discussion about the annexation. It's no, it's not annexed, no harm, no foul, and they don't, their taxes don't go up.
Okay, fair. Okay, understood.
Great question. Okay. This pre-zoning does require a public hearing. So if you would like to come forward with the pre-zoning request for Greenwood Village, please come forward now. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions about this pre-zoning?
So I have an observation. We just updated the land use plan recently, right?
That is correct.
And this was a, this particular parcel was a, an issue that kind of came up that what the city council decided, once we made our, our input, would have supported this originally.
Correct.
The city council came in and the final approval was they did not want this, they wanted this to remain rural. So now we have a land use plan that does not support this, that was just voted into place by the city council, and we're, we're seeing this before us now. And I, I just, I can't see the, going back on what our city council deliberated and voted on. So I'm not in favor of this rezoning.
Phil, I had the same reaction. I, I recall those conversations, and it felt like it was totally against what we just approved.
To me, it's one of those, zoning changes, things change over time, but at this time, our city council decided that's not what we want to do. We want this to remain rural. So, you know, I have to, I have to go with that.
I agree, and as an unelected person, I would like to say that I feel strongly that the commissioners as a whole put in a lot of effort to make those decisions about the areas that were specific to our city and growth. And this is surrounded by an immense amount of growth and a place that I feel like would be able to sustain it.
I agree, but it's the future land use plan has been updated to be rural. So I cannot support this either.
So I'll move to approve RZ twenty twenty-five zero one three.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval from rural to DDH. Just saying that out loud so that you know which way to vote.
Nonette Reese?
Yes.
Dana Camp?
No.
Phil Chancellor?
No.
Jennifer Lover?
No.
Vanessa Echols?
No.
Joseph A. Strope?
Yes.
Jennifer Stevens?
No.
Oscar Mosley?
No.
Walker Davis?
Thank you all.
Unlike council, the rest of the items stay on the agenda, so we're gonna, so we have the PDD and also the annexation.
So the applicant is requesting to prezone approximately fifty-three and a half acres with the planned development district, same property.
Could you talk up?
Yeah, yeah, okay. Same property, north side of West Farmville Road. The master development plan proposes a hundred forty-six performance, single-family residential lots, two future commercial lots, and a privately maintained twenty-one acre park. Seeking, the applicant is seeking two incentives. The first is a ten-foot decrease to the required minimum lot width. The second is a twenty percent increase to allowable floor area ratio. And the two exchanges for that would be the twenty-one acre park and parking in the rear for the future commercial on the lots that are along West Farmville. Like I mentioned earlier, the future land use is rural, which designates a density of one dwelling unit for every three acres. It's inconsistent with the future land use plan. There is one condition on this PDD that staff has recommended, and that is in order for the development to exceed sixty percent of lots at final plat, the construction of the park and the park amenities must occur. The zoning ordinance does require that staff gives recommendations on PDDs, and because of its incompatibility with the future land use, staff recommends denial. Can I answer any questions about this case, if you have one?
This park, private, public?
Privately maintained, private neighborhood park.
Yeah, and I guess, I don't know if the applicant wants, wants to speak to it, but the, so for all PDDs, when a park is ever offered as an exchange, it must seek, they must, they must seek the approval of the Parks and Rec director. And so the Parks and Rec director reached out, we had a meeting, just kind of about different amenities and facilities that need to be required. So it's parking trails, certain size of a gazebo. And I, I forget the, and it's also a type of playground, so tho- those are the big things. These are things that they committed to, that they were going to have within it. And so I guess, like I say, even though there's, that, like, the recommendation is the recommendation, future land use and everything, the, there was considerable effort on their part. This is an updated master plan. If you guys have looked at the other, the other ones, the parking was towards the road, and the facilities were towards the road, but now the park facilities and all of that has been moved to the interior, kind of in the middle there, where you guys see the parking spaces on the left side of the screen. So yeah, there has been, there's been collaboration with staff, and like I said, they have got the approval of the Parks and Rec director that their offering of a twenty-one acre private park is adequate for, from her perspective of legitimate park facility.
Did they also say bike trails around there too?
Bike trails, I think if you want to throw air quotes around it, there's not like big, it's not like the, connected to like our actual Greenway Green Space Plan. I, I think that, that, that's another PDD on this agenda. This one is probably just going to be walking trails that might be gravel or anything that could be, that could be used as bike trails for the residents, but not an extensive, not a part of an extensive bike network. This is going to be an internal park only.
Okay, this actually requires a public hearing, so for this PDD pre-zoning for Greenwood Village, I'd like to open that public hearing at this point. If anyone would like to speak to this agenda item.
Lee Tharp, College of Engineering applicant. Just wanted to speak a little bit about something that Justice was talking about. Good question on the bike paths. It's more of like a mulch kind of nature trail-y kind of thing, but I'm sure there would be kids on, on bikes and things like that. With regards to the site plan, this is obviously, I know you guys had some discussion, excuse me, with the last agenda on some of this, but part of the, the difference in the site plan from what y'all saw originally, I know that was pre-future land use plan, all that stuff we talked about. You'll notice there are two commercial out parcels that are part of the PDD that we're proposing. One is on the east side, one is on the west. Density's been cut, all that good stuff. Part of that was done in collaboration with staff, like Justice mentioned. We've talked to Allison, the Parks and Rec director. We've also had a lot of discussions with Councilwoman Beth Whitten to try to, since this was in her war, trying to get on the same page with what's kind of being proposed. Once we got some of that stuff worked out, that's why we bring it back, especially with some of the changes that are here, so. Other than that, happy to answer any questions. The primary reason for this getting pulled originally was due to some infrastructure concern with the road. Y'all are all aware of the intersection at Farmville. So the timing of the development would line up with the improvements, the intersection being made, all that good stuff, which my understanding was that was the primary concern of the council, so. We think we can speak to all of that, but just throwing that out there. If y'all got any other questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak during this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. This is for the PDD pre-zoning of Greenwood Village.
I have a question for the applicant. So you're reducing lot width to forty feet, right?
Yes, sir, a portion of the lots, not all of them.
Not all of them, just?
No, sir.
Which, which side, or?
They're primarily just interior to the development. So if you look on the, for example, if you look on the east side, you've got this, these two big central blocks, those would be forty-foot wide lots. Several along the northern boundary of that phase as well, but the majority of them are the standard lot minimum within zoning ordinance.
So for the park, is any of that actually buildable?
The, the center area? Yes, sir, so if you look, and we may have not have done our best with the colors, everything's green, but the lighter shade of green around the blue and the, the central creek right there, the lighter shade of green is all within the designated buffers for that stream.
Right.
So we're not, we wouldn't be touching any of that. The topography on the site is pretty aggressive. But some of it is buildable, yes. Not all of it, no, which is part of why we're trying to focus some amenity space around there, including the, you mentioned the park, some pavilion space, a little parking lot for access and that stuff as well. And the amenities, we, we'd like to think that they'd be split on either side of the creek. I know we've talked about connectivity on this one before. With trails and stuff, maybe a little small pedestrian bridge across the creek for connectivity from a pedestrian perspective. But the idea would be, you know, if it made more sense, once we got into the detailed development of the design or something, to split the amenities, maybe have a smaller playground area on one side and another one on the other. We're mostly looking in the PDD documents for a square footage that we talked through with Allison, the Parks and Rec director, just for context.
So what's, what are, what are the primary reasons for the forty, forty-foot width, lot widths?
Forty-foot lot widths, couple of reasons. One is this particular developer, the, trying to say this. What they're trying to deliver is maybe at a different price point than what you've seen in a lot of other developments within the area. Not saying that we're, they're going to be affordable housing necessarily, quote unquote, but the idea would be that it's at a little bit lower price point. It makes it easier with the forty-foot lots. Obviously, those are going to be a little bit smaller houses. At least on the frontage portion of it. It's also, they've had some success in other parts of the state with doing that sort of density. And so that was one reason for it, and just And so that was one reason for it, and just general density across the development was another. We, we have decreased the density, we're well below the threshold for the DDH zoning that was being requested. But that was just gonna let us get a little bit more diversity in the unit types that they were gonna be able to put out there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
But you're also increasing the floor area ratio, asking for that?
Yes, sir.
As well, which means you can go more vertical.
Correct.
Which would increase square footage.
Correct, and part of that's due to the forty-foot lot minimum, right? So that way you can get a little bit more house on a smaller lot.
Okay, what about sanitary sewer? Do we have any concerns about getting all those easements to get it there?
We've had discussions, extensive discussions with the school, and they are in, in principle agreeing with, with us to provide that easement. We do a lot of work with those guys, so, um, we feel good about that. And then there are two property owners to the south of Woodland Pines. The, the Blue Creek right there, the, the driveway at the bottom of your screen is the western entrance to Woodland Pines, and that creek kind of follows that, that same path, um, and then crosses off property. We're basically gonna be running, um, we would be running sewer along that creek until it gets off property and going across two homeowners' properties that are in the northern cul-de-sac of the Donahue Ridge. That's right, we've met with them, um, got an agreement in principle. And obviously, no paperwork or exchanges have been done, just because we're trying to get through this stage before any of that happens. But the design works, um, without any kind of lift station. We've talked to Water Resources a lot about some of that. None of us wanted a lift station here, and same with water, waters, we've proven that's gonna be adequate. So we can supply it with utilities. And the infrastructure improvements to Farmville Road that are gonna be required are, we're, we're gonna be planning on doing that as far as turn lanes and things like that.
Okay.
Leads to the traffic study, there is a traffic study?
There is a traffic study, yes, sir.
What we've shown is, here is what they recommend.
Maybe not so much on this plan, because it's not overly detailed, but you, we'll have left turn lanes on the County Road ninety-one, left turn lanes into the one connection on the east side of the development. I know previously there were two connections on the Farmville. That was another big discussion point with, um, Ms. Whitten. So we've cleaned some of that up, and right turn lanes are both connections as well. The plan would also be that for the commercial out parcels, they would be accessed internally to the streets that would be built with the development, or for the case of the out parcel in the west, uh, directly off County Road ninety-one, which would be improved, you know, to meet city development standards up to the point where we're connecting for that east side of the development.
This is depicted here close to the entrance, or the exit, or is that entrance to the school? Is that the entrance to the school?
There's a, yeah, again, we'll, we'll do better on our renderings next time, but there's a, uh, you can, you can see it great back there, the east entrance to Woodland Pines. Uh, the original plan you guys saw several months ago, we were aligning our connection with that drive. I've had some discussions with the school, they're not real interested in having those two driveways aligned. But also, we ran into a bit of a site distance issue with the driveway being located at that point, being on the inside of that curve. So we've shifted it, and we could potentially shift it a little bit further down the hill to improve that. But we, where we're showing it now, we meet the site distance requirements for that section of road. But that was part of why we shifted it. It's a fast road, so it was a lot of, it's a long distance.
Oh, yes.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none. Commissioners? Any other thoughts, comments, questions, or emotions?
I'll just say my thoughts, I'm, I'm concerned about the small lots. We're going in a rural area, rural designation, which requires three acre lots.
Yep.
Now we're going to quarter acre, twenty point two, tens of an acre lot. Concerned about the traffic on that road and the school, but safety standpoint, it's a concern. I'm glad to hear that the access for the commercial is not gonna be on Farmville, but I think we gotta make that a condition of if we approve this, because it's not a condition now.
This is just pre-D, PDD prezoning?
Yeah, prezoning.
Yeah, so I guess kind of ingress, I guess would be something that'd be on a preliminary plat. And I guess that, that'd be something that, should this be approved, and when they did come forward with plats, that'd be a time to make that condition, and that, that's something we could do.
When will this go to council?
Uh, it should be next month, so, so not, not this month, but it'll be the second meeting of September.
I'll, uh, move to approve RZ 2025-014, PDD re-zoning.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve PDD prezoning for Greenwood Village.
Nonette Reese?
Yes.
Dana Camp?
Yes.
Bill Chancellor?
No.
Jennifer Lover?
No.
Vanessa Echols?
Yes.
Joseph A. Strope?
Yes.
Jennifer Stevens?
Yes.
Oscar Mosley?
No.
Walker Davis?
No.
Thank you.
What is the?
Five to four.
Five to four.
Five to four, yes.
Approved, yeah.
All right, well.
What is that, what's happening then?
Yeah, man, whoa, yeah, yeah, whoa, we'll talk about that at the end, maybe just wanna do the annexation.
I know, I know.
Just, can you, can you get closer to the mic, Reed, that's all?
Yeah.
Yeah, just talk closer into the mic.
All right, so this is the annexation request for the same property. Um, so fifty-three and a half acres on the north side of West Farmville Road. It is contiguous, it would help eliminate an enclave. So it meets the annexation requirements, and the annexation priority is high. I can answer any questions about this item if you have them.
So the annexation level is high, why?
Because of service.
Yeah, 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 so, so, yeah, so it's not, not necessarily infill, but it's on what has now become a major road in the city. It's across the street from, uh, the school, and I think there was always just kind of a very big question about the utilities, and that was something that's, uh, like I said, as of late, within like the past year, has something that's been able to be answered. And so there's also a fire, uh, station not too far from here as well. And so like I said, for the annexation priority, viability of development and the ability for the city to efficiently provide services. And so this property can be developed and would be adequately served efficiently by safety services if we so chose to do so.
Makes sense.
That's what you call cognitive dissonance.
Thank you, this is an annexation and does not require a public hearing, commissioners?
I move to approve, uh, annexation AX 2025-009.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
All right, so now what happens?
Yeah, so, so they're both recommendations, uh, not a, not a, not a vote of confidence for the rezoning to DDH, vote of confidence for the PDD, and then I guess the vote of confidence, I guess, for the, um, I guess you guys vote for the annexation. So I mean, it's, those are all recommendations, like, I mean, I think.
In as rural with a PDD overlay that goes DDH.
Yeah, 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 but I mean, it's, I, I, I think, like, like I said, I, I, I think this just kind of shows just kind of where y'all are at on the PDD, that from your perspective and kind of everything that y'all look at, things that y'all review from Land Use Control Authority, um, it makes sense to y'all, just kind of as a body. And that's just something for the council to wrestle with, just kind of if they want to keep it rural, if they don't want to annex it, you know, that's, it's up to the council about what they want to do, so.
I fear I may have to raise this again.
Okay.
Sorry, Amber. All right, here we go. All right, so we have a rezoning request, this is the Orchard Project. Uh, this request is for the recommendation of City Council to apply the planned development district PDD designation to approximately ten point one acres. So the property currently sits just south of I-85. This is Wrightsmill Road, right here, and this is I-85, this is the bridge going over. So the property is currently ten point one acres, and the current zoning is rural, but it is pending DDH rezoning, which has been pushed back to September sixteenth, City Council meeting by request of City Council. This was on their July eighth meeting. So the DDH has already passed through Planning Commission, it just has been postponed because the City Council requested specifically to apply the PDD designation to this. And I'm also happy to answer any questions, but I will also show you the master development plan as well. So this master development plan, this is contingent for the PDD to get approved, and what the applicant is requesting is twenty-one, single-family detached lots. And for the PDD to be overlaid to this is to lock in this development for twenty-one lots specifically.
Any questions for staff, commissioners?
So just so I'm, I'm clear, so this, this does not have any commercial development?
No, sir.
With the PDD, just the, okay.
And so is Wrightsmill Road the only way in and out of this? Or I thought I read that they want to do like a private road or a private driver, did I just read that?
Yeah, so, yeah, so that's, so the only access will be internal, and I guess from Wrightsmill Road, which the, what looks like the center access point. Those three to the left of the screen, lot one, two, and three, they take frontage off of Wrightsmill Road to be legitimate subdivisions. But access for the actual residential house will come from the private shared drive that is on lot twenty-one. And so there will be more details about this when there's a preliminary plat associated with this. This is just a master development plan, really just a site plan to lock in the unit count. And so the preliminary plat is what will actually determine the, will actually be comments from staff on the viability of that private shared drive access, what, what that needs to be, them crossing that creek, and what the fate of those five lots, lot twenty-one, lot twenty, lot one, two, and three, actually ends up being in the configuration of the rest of the site.
The only other question that I had is, uh, so for lots twelve, thirteen, and fourteen that are but eighty-five, do we typically do anything as a city to require like some sort of? I know this is ahead of the, um, preliminary plat, but.
Yeah, so I, not really, I, I, I imagine, I mean, that, that's something that the, that the developer do, I mean, from sight in the house, or, or whatever they feel like doing. But I'm, I'm pretty sure we have several lots that back up to the interstate and kind of front the interstate as is now. Whether, whether some of those ended up just being fronted just kind of from like eminent domain situation, or other ones that would act, that were actually just backed up with a lot of their backyard to just against I-85, so.
Yeah, I'm good.
Thank you. This does require a public hearing, this is, uh, the Orchard PDD rezoning request. If anyone would like to come forward and speak about this agenda item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, commissioners?
I'll move to approve, ca, oh, you had a question, go ahead.
The applicant here?
Yes.
Oh, please come forward.
Yes.
It was Walker.
It's Walker.
Is the reason we wouldn't extend the street to the south? And not have a private, private shared drive, I'm assuming it's because of this creek?
Yes. Yeah, with the creek and the impacts, yeah. You know, a lot of times, if we're taking out all the buffers, you guys are asking why we're taking out all the buffers, and now we're not taking out all the buffers. Why am I not taking out the buffers? So it's kind of like, you know, I mean, trying to anticipate your call, your questions here, but yeah, we're trying to save as much of that creek through there. Originally, we didn't think this creek was, 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 uh, is in good a shape as it was. Um, so it's jurisdictional through there, so we're trying to avoid and trying to keep that, um, uh, uh, saved through there and still try to redeem, um, some viable lots as well.
And do we have traffic study yet?
Uh, it doesn't require traffic study. But we have turn lanes, you know, turn lanes are required just based upon street classification, so uh, all the, all the traffic study would tell you is whether or not those lanes are, are warranted there. You know, it's not gonna warrant a signal or anything with that little bit of frontage, but I mean, that's essentially, but, you know, we're, we're, um, you know, based upon the street classification and the current requirements, we have to put internal lanes regardless unless we came back to you all for a, or we actually, we'd have to file a waiver through engineering first, and then if they deny us.
Well, I'm very familiar with this street, I've lived nineteen years one block over.
Yeah.
And Wrightsmill Road right there is very busy.
Yep.
I think people would be surprised at the traffic. And the other concern I have is because the buses come through our neighborhood, is the school bus traffic. How this is gonna affect potential of that. Or potential for problems, because now you have an entrance off Browerwood, off Tanglewood, and now coming out of here with two hundred and forty, I think the report says two hundred and forty total a day, I think in and out, hundred and twenty in the morning, hundred and twenty in the evening. And one of my questions is, what about school buses coming in there now? Again, creating another potential problem from a safety aspect.
Yeah, I mean, I think they, they could pull in and turn around in there, you know?
Would you not see a need for maybe an acceleration lane there too? Because you're coming down the hill from the interstate. I mean, it's, it's, it's busy and it's forty-five miles an hour when you get across that bridge.
Are you talking about an acceleration lane to go south?
Yeah.
I, I mean, I, I, I would.
Because you know, the, the closest place to go interstate would be if you're going to Montgomery.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I would anticipate in this location, you know, majority of your traffic's gonna be going back to town, and not that way. You know, I, you'll have some, I, I don't disagree, you'll have some, but I.
I would disagree, because there is traffic continually coming down that hill.
Oh, yeah, I, I know, I mean.
Meaning going south is going north. Um, okay.
So I, I guess the, once again, the, that'd be something on the, on the preliminary plat that, uh, we can, I guess we, we can look at when it comes in, and, uh, that'd be, that's a condition that, that, that you want, I mean, you can put, you can put that on the plat, so.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you. Commissioners?
Move to approve case RZ 2025-015.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve PDD for the Orchard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
All right. All right, Hickory Creek, so, so we talked about this on Monday, um, that just kind of the staff's position was just that we were, we were gonna move to postpone these four items. Uh, when I talked to the applicant, they, they expressed that they would, they'd prefer to just be denied tonight instead of being postponed, just because they do diligence and, uh, all the things. So I, we didn't take it off the agenda, but I'm gonna, I'm, since I've kind of been working with the applicant, kind of, kind of loosely aware of this for, I guess, almost a year now, I'll, I'll go over, uh, I'll do all of, all of the cases for this one. So there are four cases on this one, there's the annexation, the two rezones, and the subsequent conditional use, um, at the end of it. So, just want to go to the next slide. I guess, do you guys have any questions before we get started, or? Because I guess we didn't really talk about it on Monday, so we're gonna talk about the entirety of it tonight.
I'm taking all four cases together right now?
No, 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 no.
Be back.
All right. So, okay, so the Hickory Creek annexation request. So this is sixty-eight and a half acres on Sand Hill Road, across from Mill Creek Road, at the confluence of Parks and Miller, Chouakla Creek. The, it's currently inside the Apple boundary, future land use is slated to be rural. So you guys can go to the next map, show the Apple boundary, yeah, so well inside the Apple boundary. Uh, like I said, so just kind of north of the Greens and all that, just kind of Mill Creek Road. If you guys have any, driven down there, I feel like the bottom. If you guys have any, driven down there, I feel like the bottom of Mill Creek Road sneaks up on you a lot quicker than you would think looking at a map. But you turn the corner and then suddenly there's all these houses, so. That, you guys have any questions?
Annexation is medium. This annexation does not require a public hearing. So, commissioners, do you have any questions about the annexation?
I don't have any problems with the annexation, you know?
Yeah.
And I, I, I think from a medium standpoint, so there's the sewer treatment facility that's immediately to the west of this. I guess from a utility standpoint, I mean, you guys see the surrounding area, it kind of makes, you know, it's surrounded by density and things like that. The, from the viability of development, and I guess what we can kind of talk about on some of the next items, Chouakla Creek's kind of is, is the drop dead point. That's something that the applicant can kind of talk about. They've done other projects down here and the issues that they run into. Just kind of my short time that I've been here, we've had, we're currently on our second subdivision now that's running into some real questions about viability down there from a water standpoint. So, but this is, this is the edge of that. And so, just everything kind of west of Chouakla Creek is kind of what that looks like. Everything east of Chouakla Creek is really kind of the dividing line on any density beyond one dwelling unit every three acres.
Annexation?
I move to approve AX twenty twenty-five zero one zero.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, so the rezoning. Uh, the request is for a recommendation to city council for a rezon of approximately sixty-eight and a half acres from rural to low, uh, it's low density development? All right, LDD. So many acronyms. All right, if you want to get, go to the next one. All right, so we'll, so we'll get into what the actual offering is of the development, but the LDD has a performance, performance zoning. So, pretty much if they dedicate open space, et cetera, that they can get a density of five dwelling units an acre. If they go conventional with this dedic, without, which is dedicating no open space, just kind of building out the entirety of the lot, it is two. And so, you guys can see there's LDD across the street, there's rural to the west, there's a PDD overlay with CDD below it, and there's also rural to the west, NC nine to the north. Now, currently, there is no, there is no subdivision on NC nine. There's just a single house there. There's also significant floodplain there. There's also significant floodplain on this lot as well. So, if you want to go to the next slide. So, you guys can see how the development, the subdivisions really clustered. We'll get into the kind of offerings of the different ones. But, pretty much everything in LDD, the only thing that is by right is single-family housing. All other residents, all other residential types would be conditional and have to come back to the planning commission and city council for approval. And so, we'll, we'll talk about the specifics of this on the, on the PDD.
I guess I'm a little bit confused on, um, so we were talking about, and even the recommendation is to postpone. Talk about that some more, I'm not, uh, we're, we're, we're not postponing this?
Yeah, and so, and so, so I guess the, like I said, reached out to the applicant to talk to them about it, just kind of informed them that we, we were going to be postponing it, just kind of from inadequacy of the application. They're here tonight, things, talk about it. But their, their position was just much more that in order to kind of meet their due diligence, which they've kind of had for the better part of a year, like, like, like I said, I mean, they were kind of, not, I wouldn't say ready to go, but I think they had, they had a general site plan. It's evolved from then, but I think, I'd say as early as January, February, maybe, and I think kind of, kind of some of the contacts, they've had a really long due diligence period. They thought kind of somewhere would be good. I know they've already re-upped on their due diligence once. And so, they'd rather get an answer and kind of, they could get told no sooner and then kind of pivot to something else is kind of what, what they would prefer. Because if they get, if something gets postponed, then they don't get an answer and then they don't get a cha- chance to meet their deadlines.
The reason we wanted to postpone is because there's a, I know, I mean, there's like the development agreement and the traffic study and it's just not ready for prime time.
Correct, and I guess kind of, um, they can kind of, kind of, they can speak to that, but I guess kind of the, that would be the reason against approval. That, that would be my position on that.
I, I've got a question because I'm looking at this land use plan designation for the twenty thirty. Is this the twenty thirty update?
This is not the twenty thirty update. This is, this was, this is also, this is also rural. So, that, that, that is why this was, so, I guess kind of my, staff's position wasn't to postpone for an eventual future recommendation of approval. Staff's position was to postpone because like, like Phil said, not ready for prime time. Right, so, even once we got those things, like, it would have been similar to the recommendation for the Farmville rezoning where it didn't comply with the future land use plan and so we would have had to recommend denial. But it just would have been, it would have been able to be heard. And so, their position is fine. If there's going to be a denial, let there be a denial, but we would just like to be heard tonight. It's kind of where they're at, and then that way they can move on to city council.
And then barring, I mean, i- if there should answer these questions, traffic study, development agreement, et cetera, come back at a future date, we can entertain this thing all over again.
Well, I, it's...
It seems to me, it, it seems to me where they're taking up council time then, that, that frankly, they shouldn't be taking up because they don't, they're not ready for prime time.
That's where you're at on it, yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think, I think, yeah, it's one thing for them to want to be denied, but their application is simply not ready. Well, if their application's not ready, that's not, that's not on us. And, and we shouldn't have to say to them, oh, we're going to deny this because you're not ready. Rather, we should be saying, we're going to postpone this until you are ready. That's my, because otherwise, you're just taking up council time for no reason, and our council's time is valuable.
Good point.
Applicant is here tonight?
Mm-hmm.
I can speak to all of these questions and concerns. This does require a public hearing. So, would like to do that first. You want to speak or do you want to do public hearing first? Let's do public hearing, see what...
There may be more questions.
There may be more questions. After public, after public hearing.
I might be able to make it a little shorter. If y'all like.
Public hearing is required. So, I will open that now if you'd like to come and speak about Hickory Creek LDD rezoning request. Welcome to do that after if you wish.
All right. Kevin Gaston, forty-one thirty-two Creekview Court, neighborhood right across the street. I don't have any problem with houses. I, I don't have any problems with the townhomes. I do have concerns with the setup of the neighborhood being unlike anything in our corner of town. Our corner of town is truly one of the last remaining quiet corners of town, we feel like. There's a reason we all live out there. Mr. Davis has brought up before several concerns with traffic. I'm not sure the last time anybody in this room has taken a trip down Sand Hill Road recently. It is massively used. Coming out of the quarry, dump trucks, this is all part of industry what is down that road. I'm very concerned with the amount of additional traffic, especially with the commercial use with the grocery store, the gym, and some of the other amenities being put in there. That just does not fit what our corner of town is like. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Michael Gramlich, four-one-two-five Creekview Court. I'm also in the neighborhood in Parkinson's Mill. Mr. Gaston is my neighbor. And we have the same general concerns, not just traffic, but infrastructure in general. As you pointed out, it's on a floodplain. We are not technically in Auburn City water. We're in Loch Pocahou Water. I don't know what their infrastructure capacity is like, which would have a problem for us. There's an electrical grid, which on that part of town, there's a lot more raised wires and a lot more trees, which leads to a lot more power outages when it comes to any kind of inclement weather. So, a lot of our concerns are related to not just traffic. We have a lot of families in that neighborhood. And so, if it looked like the design had city public, park, if we wanted to access that, we could not let our kids cross Sand Hill Road. We don't even let them get near that road. If we did that, we would need something like a stoplight, which would hurt the trucking because they are paid by delivery. So, they would not like that. So, there would have to be some kind of, not just traffic issue, but dealing with a lot of the commercial development and usage of the road. So, that's our major concern. Thank you.
How are you all tonight?
Good, how are you?
Kyle Casey, four-one-three-six Creekview Court. Uh, I just kind of wanted to, I guess, third what they're kind of saying. We moved back several years ago and, um, my neighbor back home was always ten acres away across a pond and a pasture. So, this is relatively new for me. But, like Kevin said, it's a really quiet area. That's what kind of sold me on that Sand Hill area. It's kind of your last frontier for the rural development on that side of town. So, really appreciate that, but kind of like what they're saying, it's, it's a very busy road. I work here for the city court and I've heard several times, Lord forbid, that this ever happened to any kids over there. But, the curve coming down Sand Hill right there by the water resource is called death's curve, from what I've heard in the past. That's my concern, is kind of the traffic, the business of that road. And development's going to happen. I'm not saying that should stop, but just the appropriate action taken to make sure it's a safer place for our families and whoever lives across the street. Plus, Mill Creek, you're out of that new development where the old golf course used to be. I don't know where that stage is, but Mill Creek connecting to Shell Tumor is a nightmare right now. And then you add all that traffic going over to Wrightsmill, which we were talking about, that development earlier. It's, it's a lot of congestion that can build up, so. Safety is my biggest concern, so just wanted to third that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, how are y'all?
Hi.
Good.
Hey, Will Register, two-three-eight Kelly Lane. We're getting ready to build our house out on Sand Hill Road. I, for one, think they raised a lot of good points. I do think this would be a good add to our area because this is the last area on Sand Hill Road that can accommodate a development like this with commercial. You know, it's very rural out there. We own land out there as well. And, um, you know, it's a lot of big houses, a lot of farms, and we've got to travel into town to South College to do anything. I think this would be a nice add to the area. That's all I've got to say.
Please sign in. Anyone else?
Dustin Norris, sixteen hundred Sand Hill Road. Own a property of about forty acres immediately across the creek of the proposed development. Don't know what else I can add. I think Mr. Gaston and several of the others summed it up pretty well. The, the bridge just this side of Chouakla Creek, not the one that crosses it, but I guess Parkinson's Mill. Very narrow, a ton of traffic coming from the quarry. And, and, and again, and, you know, very unlike anything else that's out that way in general. And again, most of those things were, were pretty well summarized and I, I agree with most everything out there. And then the, the other similar developments in their area. Arbor Woods, Rodrick Creek, Chouakla Ridge, all were held to, you know, standards, three-acre standards to keep density down. So, just like to add that I, I think the, the development should be held to the same standards in order to help protect that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Matt Cockrull, two-two-one-six Mountain Vernon Lane. I'm on the north side of town and I'm grateful that we have everything that we have on the north side of town that in two or three minutes I can get to whatever I need to get to. And, um, I just think that this, this, along with the, the commercial aspect of it and along with the green space aspect of it is, and I believe that there may be some connectivity with the city. Is that correct? As far as green space is concerned?
Yeah, so, so I guess, um, not a Q and A, so we'll, we'll, I'll, I'll answer your question.
Yeah, that's great. So, I just think that that is, uh, something that, that's, that's needed. It's great, and I think that having a little more dense development on the south side as opposed to just all of them on the north side is, I think it's, it'd be, it, it would be a benefit to the homeowners down there. I had a client that told me that, um, they live in Creekview and they bought in Creekview because they thought that development was going to come their way and nothing has come their way. And so, um, I think it'd be a benefit to, to all of Auburn. Thank you.
Thank you. Please sign in. Anyone else like to speak on this item?
I'm Brittany Register, two-three-eight Kelly Lane. I'm Will's wife, so also building our house out on Sand Hill and family's got some land out there. Now, personally, considering that, you know, we're planning to live there for, you know, our whole lives, hopefully, God willing, we plan to be out there for a long time. So, we know inevitably, you know, development's going to happen. And I think the uniqueness of this project, I do like it a lot. I will say it's important to consider that if you live on Sand Hill, as far as like shopping options, you essentially have to either go, you know, Walmart, Aldi, or you have to go to Tiger Town. And I think, I just hate to see, you know, I personally am a victim of that. I go to Opelika all the time, spend my tax dollars there. I just think it'd be a nice option for us residents. So, yes, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Please sign in. Anyone else like to speak on this side, item? Okay, seeing no one, I close the public hearing. Can we answer some questions and have the applicant join us, I guess?
Yeah, so, so I guess kind of from a, from a connectivity standpoint, I think what they're referencing was the trail aspect of it. And so, if you, so, we'll, we'll talk about it much more on the, on the PDD since that's kind of part of the rezoning. But, the floodplain, I guess it's, it's like thirty-two acres that would, that, on the plan is showing that it's being dedicated to the city. I could figure that out. But, that would be, so, the old twenty-eleven Greenways, Green Space Master Plan that hadn't been updated. It has a lot of the Greenways, uh, just kind of along major creeks. And so, with this being a confluence of it, there's pieces along the boundary of this entire thing that kind of run along the south side and the east side of it. And so, it's, it's something that's highlighted in the PDD and I, I think Hayes also has a presentation prepared where he highlights it. But that, that's what they're referencing, and so we'll, we'll talk more about it in depth later.
Yes, okay, great. Advocate?
Hello, how are y'all doing today? Um, I'm Hayes Eifert, Sanford Group, here on behalf of the development. Our office is at two-four-four-nine Moores Mill Road, Suite one-twenty. So, lots of questions up here, totally understand the confusion. The, the backstory to this project is we brought this in about a year ago to staff with very similar plan, LDD with a PDD overlay. There was talk of a PUD ordinance that was coming in and this would fit perfectly in that kind of box. And so, we held out for a couple of months waiting for that ordinance. We continued to hold out. It hasn't substantiated yet in a way where we can use it yet for something like this. And so, that is why we've gotten a little bit behind the eight ball in regard to our timeline, meeting the planning commission's schedule, the city council's schedule. We were just trying to go ahead and get an answer, like I mentioned, like Justice mentioned earlier. And so, really what I would like to do, I have a presentation prepared that answers a lot of these concerns that you guys brought up as part of inadequate, um, application. And so, I'd love to go and share that if that's acceptable.
I guess we have it in the, in the PDD one, so I guess it's, it's up to y'all. I mean, if you guys, if y'all want to hear it now, if y'all want to hear it then,[1768.44] I mean, if y'all wanna hear it now, if y'all wanna hear it then, either or. So I mean, we can...
It has the...
Is the next agenda item?
Have you guys vetted this information?
So I guess, so we don't have a formal development agreement yet, but I guess there's, from my understanding, you had a lot of conversations with Water Resource Management. And then I guess they did submit the draft of a traffic study. That traffic study had been reviewed by staff, that hasn't changed. But I guess I don't, I don't wanna sit here and say that he just showed us like land, I think in December last year. Like I said, I think he's had a plan together, we've had several meetings about it. But like I said, there's no formalized development agreement like there has been associated with other projects. But I mean, we are loosely aware that this is something that he's intended to bring in. I think we've had about two or three pre-apps with this property alone. So yeah, I mean, we have talked about this, but I think vetted it to the point where, like I said, like where there's a formalized development agreement now.
So I'd just assume, wait till the next, till we actually go to the next item, cause we need to talk about this item first.
Yeah, that's what I would say, yeah. Yeah, but you just, cause I think this is just the zoning, but I think the PDD kinda talks about everything in its entirety, that kinda wraps everything up and puts it together.
Maybe just what I would add there is, we would not have this heard at city council until the items in this are finalized. But due to the constraints of the calendar and due diligence schedules, due to the delays, that's why we're kind of needing it to go ahead and be voted on today, so.
Okay. Commissioners, Hickory Creek, LDD rezoning request.
So the question that I have is that the document says that, you know, no rezoning of land from rural until such time as adequate public utilities are available. So are there adequate public utilities available now?
And so that's what the, that's what the development agreement would speak to. And so that's why, so normally when you guys see anything that has a, that is being rezoned from rural to DDH or whatever, is accompanied by a development agreement. In the past, sometimes we make a comment that development agreement needs to be ironed out before then. And so what has been happening is that they may get a vote of confidence from the planning commission and then there may be a lag from when it goes to planning commission and then goes to council because of, the development agreement needs to be buttoned up. That was the case on the Adair property where, but that was, there were different aspects of the development agreement there. Now for this, like I said, the development agreement has not been accounted for. And like I said, I think that is, I said the reason, if you guys wanted to vote it down, then that would be adequate reason why. But like I said, there has been discussion with WRM. There just hasn't been anything formally signed to and agreed to about both parties being the city.
Is there a condition on a zoning request?
Yeah.
I guess, I mean, we have comments that, we have comments normally that speak to the development agreement. And I guess that this would be no different, that there would be a development, there would be, like a development agreement would be needed for this, like you mentioned, for this to be heard by council, pretty much.
Well, the reason I ask that is because if the comment on this rezoning request is, it doesn't actually change from rural, since it was just annexed, to this unless the development agreement is put into place. But somebody, as a commission, we wanted to look at the PDD to be more effective with our decision in that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so I mean, if you wanna condition it that, I mean, on the condition that a formal development agreement is signed at the time that it's passed, I mean, that's fine. We've done that in the past, but I think we're actively trying to get away from that in the future. That like we do not want, that we want the utilities to be buttoned up before y'all make a decision. That way y'all aren't recommending a rezoning without adequate utilities in place to realize the density.
Just...
Yeah, it's one of those things for me personally, I just assume, I understand you as a developer have issues, but really that's not our concern. You know, our concern is making sure that it's not just about your development, it's the next development, next development after that that come through here and making sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. And so in this particular case, I gotta admit, I, I, I don't, it is an option for us to postpone this, right?
That is correct, yeah.
And so, and so I would suggest that we postpone this item and the next two items until twenty twenty, until twenty eleven, and not send items to the commission that do not have the i's dotted and t's crossed. I just think that's important, that we keep that established and make sure that we are consistent with what we expect.
Yeah.
So I'd move that we postpone RZ twenty twenty five oh one two to September eleventh, twenty twenty five.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to postpone to nine eleven, twenty twenty five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So you'll, you'll need to postpone the next, the next two as well?
Yeah. Do we need to have a public hearing, or can we just postpone?
So can I ask a question? So can you clarify on your motion and decision? You had the public hearing for this previous item. You would have the option to be able to pull that back open. So if you do postpone these items, could you speak to the public hearing being postponed with that?
Upon postponement, the public hearing would be reopened.
Public hearing, well, you don't have to speak to it to the previous one, but you can always open a public hearing if you've already had one, but just speaking to the fact that you would not have to have another public hearing related to the rezoning to LDD. However, what the other items, you know, when you do act on those, if you do act, postpone them, do reference that the PDD, that the public hearing would be held over to the next.
For the next two you're talking about?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
So I, can we move to propose to postpone both items, the next two items, together? Or do we have to vote separately on them?
If you separate, case numbers?
Yeah, I'd say, yeah, just do an individual case numbers.
Okay. Then I move to postpone RZ twenty twenty five zero one six until September eleventh, twenty twenty five, and that we then have the public hearing at that particular time, right?
Yep.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And move to postpone CU twenty twenty five zero four six until September eleventh, twenty twenty five, which time the public hearing will take place for that.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One second, one second. We're just taking a moment for everyone to get settled again. Just wanna make note that Chairperson, Commissioner Joe Estrop is leaving.
Okay. Everyone ready? Alright, so the next item on our agenda is for a conditional use request. This request is for recommendation to city council for conditional use approval for a commercial and entertainment use, which that being a package store. The property is currently located on eight fifty Martin Luther King Drive. So looking at the Prox Map, this is the location of the area. So this box highlighted is the current corner market store. They sell, it's pretty much just like food, gas station. They also sell beer, they also sell wine, up to a certain percentage of alcohol. What they're proposing is a five hundred and ten square foot repurpose of an interior space for wine, that is a higher percentage as well as liquor. So looking at the site plan, this is not an addition. This is a repurposing of five hundred and ten square feet of internal space. There will be a separate doorway that is separate from the main corner store. So no one will have to go through the main store in order to get access to this. This is simply its own space. But this does require conditional use approval, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
So how does this separate entrance work? So you come in, you go into the package store and you check out at the counter, the cash counter that's in the grocery store, or how does that work?
Right.
I guess I kinda got lost with that.
Yeah.
Trying to figure out.
Yeah, so I guess, this is actually on my commute to work and I've actually stopped in here for lunch before, to get stuff for lunch, like in the morning. But if you immediately walk into the door, like to your left, like if you just walked in and stuck out your left hand, you would touch the counter. And it's like all, it's like all S Plexiglas, whatever, but they kinda are standing behind the counter like right there. So and then like I think they got cigarettes and everything behind there, like just kinda typical gas station, pretty much kinda what it looks like. But then they have other offerings that are, generally it looks a lot bigger on this than it actually is cause there are like aisles and everything in the middle. So I don't know if they're gonna redo the rest of it, but there's just aisles kinda vertically and then kinda horizontally in the store as well. But the counter, I imagine, is gonna stay in the same place. Like I said, it is immediately, like once you walk in and it goes like the length for like ten or fifteen feet or so. It's end to scale, but yeah.
I'm just gonna add that this is state requirement that the package store has to be isolated. I think we discussed that before, but also, you know, with that, that's, it's, the configuration they've shown is pretty typical for this type of facility.
I think I asked this at Packet, how far is the next store, the next liquor sales store?
I think when we pulled it up, it was point four miles, and so, yeah, point four miles.
Which would be Legos, so.
Right. This does require a public hearing? And is the applicant here, do we know? Okay, I just, yeah, if we have more questions, thank you. I do wanna go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. If you'd like to come forward about the corner market plus conditional use item.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Stephen Falk, pastor of Auburn AME Zion Church, five seven six Martin Luther King Drive, here in Auburn, Alabama. As we have before, we are here again expressing our oppositions to package store liquor store in close proximity to our church. There are already two package stores, liquor stores in close proximity, and this will be the third. And for a number of reasons that I think I've shared in a letter to you, we feel that we're not opposing to capitalism and people doing various business in order to provide for our community and for themselves, but we do stand in opposition of a liquor package store and this being the third one within fifteen hundred feet of the church. We were not able to express our oppositions to previous package stores, but we will go forward doing that. Many of our leaders from the church are here to stand in agreement with me on this position. Thank you.
Thank you, please sign in. If anyone would like to come forward and speak to the item at hand?
Good evening. I'm Doris Talbot Hutchison, I live at six oh six Spencer Avenue here in Auburn. And as before, we didn't want a package store where the family of Dolly is. And we don't need another package store in the community. We would welcome a police substation. But no, and this package store is right there at Bear Baptist Church too. And we got a new subdivision coming up on Foster Street. And I'm sure the buyers over there would not appreciate a package store that close to the community. So I oppose it as other members of my church, which is Auburn AME Zion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's H. V. Steele. I'm a member of Auburn AME Zion Church and...
Your address, please.
Say it again.
Your address, please.
I am.
Your address.
Oh, I'm sorry, thirteen oh nine Albee Drive, Auburn, Alabama. A member of, like I said, Auburn AME Zion. And as Pastor said, we oppose another liquor store here, right here in our front door. Not just our church, but I think out of the back door of that store is another church. And, you know, to me seems like that that would be a slap in the face to this community to put a liquor store in the front door of a church fifteen hundred feet from another church. We'd like to keep Auburn, Auburn. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to come forward?
Good evening. My name is Pamela Pitts and I reside at four twelve Verson Road, Auburn, Alabama. I am a member of Auburn AME Zion Church. I am in opposition of a package store. I will encourage Rick that if he develops a bar and grill, that, some type of restaurant, that we would welcome such a thing. But just as a package store, we also have housing authorities, two housing, family housing developments there. That's, you have the old project and you got Drake's apartment, a lot of kids back and forth. Teenagers trying to get where they get, so that's why I'm opposed of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, hello. My name is Melody Scott, I live at thirteen fifty-five Commerce Road, Auburn, Alabama. I'm opposing that, that's too much. I, I, I do not, I don't drink, I don't smoke. But to see our young kids get introduced to this over and over again, I oppose that. Because as a mother, which, to see my kids to grow up and drink, well, I opposed that then, but the state of Alabama gave them the right, cause they turned twenty-one. But to see our young children having to go and be able to purchase alcohol or have someone else to purchase for them, let's not make that easy for them. So I do oppose that myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Applicant, you can come forward if you would like to speak.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Roerickus Cook and I live at nineteen sixty-two Kirkland Drive and I'm here to represent RNC Enterprises, the applicant. I'm very sensitive to what I hear from members of AME Zion Church, but I'll also add that I'm a member of Bear Baptist Church, the church that is right there beside the store that my sister and I built eighteen years ago over in northwest Auburn. And I would just like to add, you know, I don't, I don't stand for in that store, I should say the market. And I say the market intentionally. When we built this store eighteen years ago, we didn't, we didn't call it a store, we called it a market because we were looking to bring various items, dry goods and things to a community that had not had any development in over forty years. And we've been there eighteen years now. And this footprint where you see five hundred square feet of a package store, of being able to sell liquors and all, the intent is not to corrupt the neighborhood. The intent is not to offer things that would not enhance the neighborhood. We're simply offering things that we've been asked to offer by a lot of our customers and others. And so I pledge to the city of Auburn, I pledge to you all that anything that we do there at eighteen fifty Martin Luther King Drive, that will be done in good taste. It'll be done in very good taste and it will reflect Auburn, it will reflect the type of growth that we have and it will all... And it would always be mindful of the citizens who live in immediate proximity and ensuring that the kids are safe and, and everything else otherwise. So I'm just here to say that, um, this is not done with any ill intent and not careful thought. Uh, we're, we're doing something that I've been doing now over in the community for over twenty years, and that's investing back. Thank you.
You have any questions for applicant or staff, or do we need to answer? Have any questions to answer?
I have a question about the parking situation there. It's, I'll wait till you finish signing in. So with this, there are no plans to extend the parking lot is on the back of Foster Street, correct?
Unfortunately, uh, we can't. Uh, that's all the land that we have there. Uh, over the years, I, I've looked to, to try to partner and, and expand and do some things. But just right now, the, the appetite has not been to, to move in that direction. So, uh, we're limited by what we have, and, and the space that we have is what we have.
But parking would be, if approved, parking wouldn't be an issue, right? Because it's the same footprint as
Yeah, no, it, it, yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be an issue. I guess that's something that, that we would review, I guess, just verify like the, if there'd be any more parking spaces required versus like what's already there, but it shouldn't be.
I was asking in reference to if this is gonna increase the number of visitors.
Yeah, probably, but I mean, yeah. So, 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 so I guess kind of how, how we derive parking, I guess for these commercial uses like this are normally based on square footage. And so at a time of, of approval, that's something that we would review, um, just kind of if they had that open parking, how many parking spaces they had. And then like if any needed to be added or, 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 or whatever. But I guess like on, on a lot of these, on the commercial spaces, commercial buildings normally overbuild their parking. It's rarely a case where they build just enough. Um, and we're not talking about something that's kind of like downtown, um, where there an existing non-conformity, like kind of, I guess the goalpost would be one in particular where they're kind of, those parking spaces don't even comply because they got the back onto the street to get in and out of them. Um, so this really, this wouldn't be the case there. That'd be something that, that we would review. And so I imagine that the parking requirement may go up, but like I said, commercials, commercial, uh, enterprises are normally overbuilt on parking. And so it wouldn't be something where the site plan would have to change.
Any other questions?
Do we have ordinance in Auburn about distances from schools and churches and other type establishments?
I don't think we do. Last time we looked at it was just kind of, uh, about the Farmville and Donahue, the commercial section up there. And so there's state law that does require things like that. Um, but I guess that's, that would be something on, I guess like the, that the state would review like when, when I guess like that's, that's all submitted on the liquor license side.
Well, I too am concerned about parking. I've, I've looked at Google Earth, happened to be the front parking lot was full when they took that picture. And it's a long way to that back parking lot. And just concerned of the number of addition, I believe additional people. Because I know, uh, over at, uh, Opalaka Road and Gay Street, when that liquor store went in, I'm in that area quite a bit and, uh, multiple times a week, and that parking, uh, the parking increased, the number of cars increased.
If I could, I would add this though, on, on the back of the store, and this is something that we just did recently. There is a rear entry into the store, and that makes it easily accessible for those parking in the back to enter and relax some of the congestion on the front side. And so
But they still would have to come, to get into this, they've gotta come from the outside, right?
Yes, and, and that's along the, the reason why we decided to store.
Yeah, okay, okay. Thank you.
Um, I do need, uh, one of our, um, Commissioner Chancellor is recusing himself. Commissioners, comments, questions, or motions?
Just, uh, one more time, if we say that there were, there was another liquor store within proximity of this one.
Yes, yeah, 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 yeah. So point four miles. So the closest one is that gas station Legos, that's at Don, that's at the corner of Donahue and MLK. And then if you go south on Donahue from there, making the right and across the tracks, we can get to the light, to the left across the, across the street is another one, and that's Goalpost, and that's at the corner of Glen and Donahue.
Okay. All right. So this would be the third liquor store within a half, call it a half mile area.
Well, I'll say I can't support it, but again, for several reasons I've mentioned and others, I can't support it.
It feels excessive to me, um, as well.
I would agree the community supposed.
Any other questions? Well, we need to vote on it, right? So I'll make a motion to approve KCU twenty twenty-five dash zero four zero.
Second. I have a motion and a second for the approval of a conditional use of package store. For voting. Of second. I vote yes. Just debating roll call or? Roll call, please.
Nonnet Reese?
No.
Dana Camp?
No.
Jennifer Lover?
No.
Vanessa Eccles?
No.
Jennifer Stevens?
No.
Oscar Mosley?
No.
Walker Davis?
No.
Oh, good. Could you please lower that? I can't see. We came back up.
It's a magic desk.
Thank you. This next request is a waiver to the City of Auburn subdivision regulations that prohibits, um, vehicular access to a flag lot from a collector road. The subject property is at three eighty-nine Shell Tumor Parkway, which is classified as a collector. The subject property is seven point three nine acres. It has just over four hundred feet of frontage on Shell Tumor. Um, and the applicant wishes to subdivide the property into two lots. The minimum lot size in the rural zoning district is three acres, so legally this could happen. We haven't seen a formal plat submitted yet that shows, um, a proposed configuration of the lots. The standard minimum lot width in the rural zoning district is seventy feet. Um, however, the subdivision regulations allow a flag lot to be a minimum of thirty feet at the road frontage. The applicant has provided this exhibit that shows a proposed layout with the thirty feet of road frontage on Shell Tumor. And that's really all for the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Uh, this waiver does not require public hearing, so, um, if y'all have questions for applicant and or staff.
Yeah, I imagine she's here. She, I imagine she'll want to like speak.
If you'd like to come and say a few words, please feel free to come forward. Probably the shortest one here, right? Good evening, and, uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, my name is Beth Suttle, and I live at three eighty-nine Shell Tumor Parkway. I prepared, so I'm just gonna read straight from it, if that's okay. So I'd like to add some context to why I don't have a, a plat for you right now, and some context behind what I'm, I'm requesting to do. When I purchased the property in twenty twenty-two, one of the most important factors, uh, in my decision was the understanding based on the assurances from the listing agent and a preliminary layout provided as Exhibit A. Um, I've emailed some, uh, I've even emailed that exhibit, and I have one with me if you need it.
Can you go to the next line? There we go.
Okay, thank you. The Exhibit A was, um, provided to me when I was reviewing purchasing it. Then I was told then that the subdivision was possible with the layout, uh, in Exhibit A. Now, while I now understand that those assurances aren't binding, I did act in good faith and began the process soon after purchasing to subdivide. At that time, I shared Exhibit A with a planning engineer that's no longer with the city, and no concerns about being able to subdivide utilizing a thirty or thirty-five foot access where it was mentioned. Unfortunately, some damages that we discovered to the house made it impossible for me to be able to continue to pursue it. However, I had gone ahead and purchased a survey. So the, the waiver that I'm requesting is kind of a preliminary approval to determine whether or not the waiver will be approved to help me mitigate some of the costs for doing a, doing the survey and coming back, uh, for permission to subdivide. The waiver that I'm requesting, it addresses two, uh, main challenges. The placement of the existing home, which limits how the property can be divided without creating practical and visual issues. And the need for a flag lot to work around that constraint while maintaining the property's natural appeal. So as was mentioned, on paper, my lot does have about four hundred and thirty-five feet of lot frontage. So it seems as though ma- making that seventy foot, uh, requirement would be easy to do. But because of the three per minimum lot size and the way that the home that was there when I purchased, uh, is positioned, meeting that rule would mean a number of things. It would mean the loss of approximately one-third of an acre on the east side, pushing the rear property line setback extremely close to the front of the existing home. It would mean cutting into the existing natural landscape, removing more than two dozen fruit trees that I've planted, relocating underground utilities, creating irregularly shaped lots, creating new driveways directly in front of the home, extremely close to the existing home, and significantly altering the land's topography. But in contrast, granting the waiver would allow me to use the driveways that are already in place. On the image to the right, the yellow line actually shows, uh, an existing roundabout driveway that's already there. It would preserve the natural landscape and fruit trees. It would avoid moving utilities. And it would work around the flood zone that is on the west property line. And it would also help mitigate the constraint of the sewer easement that, uh, provides access to one of the largest sewer mains in the city. And it would make better use of its irregular shape without disrupt, disrupting its character. With regard to the collector road restriction, uh, my property does not, and never will, to my knowledge, ever directly access the collector road and, as shown in all of the Appendix A flag lot examples in the subdivision regulations. The route to the road actually passes through State Park property. Also, subdivision access happens entirely on prop, on private property before reaching the park boundary. Because of this, there's no change to city or state infrastructure, no new traffic patterns, no safety hazards. And in fact, my situation might, could reasonably be interpreted as meeting the internal subdivision street exception in the subdivision regulations. So in summary, this, this waiver isn't about bending the rules for convenience. It's about applying them with flexibility to address a unique property situation. It allows me to responsibly subdivide in a way that preserves the environment, uses existing infrastructure, avoids unnecessary cost and disruption, and maintains the beauty of this piece of Auburn. So I do respectfully ask for your approval. Thank you. Have questions?
Yeah, I've got a couple of comments. Um, so the issue here sounds like it's, we don't have a good preliminary plat. I mean, if we had a, a good legit preliminary plat, we could start accounting for all these different things that are going on on the piece of property and see if they make sense or not.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's part of it. I, 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 I think it might be secondary, but yeah.
What's the, the main thing? Is it the flag lot hitting the?
Yeah, I think so. And, and I, I, I think the, the plat, not having a plat means there's no accuracy to kind of what we're doing. And I, 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 I think that's the, that's the main reason, um, like, I mean, kind of like similar to the Hickory Creek stuff of things not being bundled up, kind of ready for showtime. It, we don't really, we don't approve things without
So we're not really saying that in principle that this, this is a bad thing. This, and, you know, we could, given the right information, we can make good decisions and then adjust things, and then maybe we could make that happen.
Yeah, and I, 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 I think also, uh, kind of thinking through just different lot configurations. Um, and I, I get it. I, I, normally like, you know, we're dealing with, um, business owners, land developers, you know, getting a, getting a survey done is, you know, that's, you know, pennies on the dime for those guys. So, you know, they, they, they get a million of those done. I understand for private property owners who might be, you know, aspiring to subdivide, they might get a price tag on what is a seven acre lot with a creek and all of that, what that might be. Um, but on our end, I mean, we, it's, you can't take a, you know, a, a s- a sketchup drawing to the courthouse and record it. That's not gonna work. So it's just kind of where we're at on, we can't certify that there is three acres there to even make a, like, even should you guys approve this waiver, we still wouldn't be able to certify, like, you know, well, there's three acres to be made. And I guess that's, that, that's kind of part of it, so.
I agree with that. And the, I, I don't know if arbitrary is the right word, but like from seventy to thirty, is that without the survey or the plat or the knowing that it really exists that way? If it's a possibility that she needs from seventy to thirty?
Yeah, cause I guess kind of we, like, I mean, we, we can measure and everything on the, on the GIS, but I mean, e- even that, I mean, the, the guys come in and, yeah. And I mean, they'll tell you, like, I mean, we've had situations where they use our GIS data for the preliminary stuff, and then they'll actually get a survey after everything's approved, and then DRT plans have to change because it didn't accommodate for something. And so just kind of on, on our end, we're really kind of dealing with precision on this. And especially when you start talking about the geometry of like the seventy to thirty, um, really, it starts to matter a lot. I think the, the other part, and, and I think for the, you know, respect to the, to the property owner and, like, you know, as a subdivider, I mean, it, it'd be wonky, but she could give herself a fruit tree easement. Um, I don't think there's ever been a fruit tree easement, but you could put an easement on there that, I mean, that would preserve the trees. So I, I think those are things that, that are there to be talked about, and I think just kind of different geometries, um, that are possible. But like I said, I think a lot of that just has to do with, on our end, we can't really review something in theory. Because even if you guys gave the waiver, there's still a possibility that when we actually got the subdivision plat, we would still look at it and go, there are several things that still don't meet that need to change.
Well, and if, at this point, she's asking for two lots, so that would actually have to come before us anyway.
Yeah, no, 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 no. Right, 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 right. And that, that'll be, that would all be an admin plat. Um, but like, like I said, I think even, even given the waiver, all that would mean is that I, I couldn't, we, staff would not be able to say, we're not gonna sign this because of lot width. But that doesn't mean that there wouldn't be other reasons that we would not sign the plat.
Right. I mean, I get that, but, okay. What do you? I don't. I don't, I mean, I don't know. She asked about postponing the decision, and I was like, I don't know what that helps without
Yeah, so, so, so like, like every item, uh, you guys can approve, deny, postpone to date certain, um, it's kind of, kind of what you want. I mean, we can happily engage, uh, the applicant with it, um, just kind of, kind of with this. But like, like I said, I think, um, unfortunately, there's just no assurances on our end that we can give somebody without looking at a physical plat that has the dimensions, um, and the accuracy of, like, we, there are three acres to be had here.
Is there a timeline on waiver requests, like we deny, can you ha- have, can come back?
No, that's just unconditional uses pretty much, and then like the rezonings. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, 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 no.
Okay, this doesn't require a public hearing, so commissioners?
Move to approve PC case WZ twenty twenty-five zero zero three.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve waiver and subdivision, of subdivision regulations for Greenwire subdivision. Roll call.
Nonnet Reese?
No.
Dana Camp?
No.
Field Chancellor?
No.
Jennifer Lover?
Jennifer Lover?
No.
Vanessa Echols?
No.
Jennifer Stevens?
No.
Oscar Mosley?
No.
Walker Davis?
No.
Thank you, commissioners. Okay, welcome to old business.
All right.
All right, man.
Other, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry.
I mean, you're not wrong. These have been, both of these have been here before, so. So, action requested with this one is a recommendation to City Council for a six-month extension of conditional use approval for performance residential development.
Excuse me.
At thirteen ninety-seven North Dean Road. All right, you guys are familiar. ArchCo, we kind of, we were talking about it in the meeting on Monday. Possibly the fifth time that it showed back up, possibly the third. They have asked for several extensions. The market has really done a number on MUDs for what they're looking at. And their financing has been kind of the reason that they've asked for extensions in the past. The reason for asking for an extension on this one is different. They, as you know, are currently in the process of selling the property to Interlude. And Interlude has an active conditional use on site plan that has been approved by City Council, has been approved by you all as well. And so, we've kind of gone back and forth about this a lot internally. But pretty much, ArchCo's reason for asking is to protect their interest in the deal. Should the deal fall through, they can still have a conditional use. Technically, they have approved engineering plans that would need to be reviewed again by staff. But they have something they could then, then again, turn around and sell to somebody else. Is their reason for asking for the extension. Staff's opposition to this, just beyond them showing up multiple times and asking for a, the extension with this project and kind of tying up land. The idea of having multiple site plans under one use on the same site is an issue. So, you can have multiple conditional uses. You can have infinite conditional uses on a site. You can do that, no problem. Having multiple site plans under one conditional use, more of an issue. Especially when there are two competing projects, two competing companies, doesn't really make any sense. But, I mean, it's kind of on them. I mean, Interlude was authorized to act as applicant with their application. They had permission from the seller to do so. I think kind of under our lens, we prefer to honor the latest submission and kind of stick with that. And so, that's where staff comes down on it. We don't think it really makes sense to have two active site plans under one. I think it's one thing if the site plan gets altered in DIT from one to another. But it doesn't make sense to start out with two and then guys come here with, you know, well, I have site plan A, B, or C, and like, you know, we'll see just kind of what we choose, just kind of as we go. That's not something that we want to open it up to.
But the site plans are with two different applicants.
Correct.
And different.
Correct, vastly different. So, one of them is, I think, a network of, if you can go to the, go to the next one, yeah. So, as you guys saw on the other one, it was much more of a neighborhood that had multiple different houses. There were duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, singles. This is just much, these are bigger buildings, pretty much. And so, it's just vastly different, just kind of from the site plan and what would also be done.
The other issue was, the reason for the six months is because this, under ArchCo, is about to expire?
Correct, the expiration date is September nineteenth.
And if it expires, they have to?
They would have to come back entirely and then apply for a conditional use, yep. Do the whole, do the whole thing. So, they can't move forward with the building permit, et cetera. But like I said, they expressed that this was purely to protect their interests and should the Interlude deal fall apart. They're very confident in the Interlude deal, but they wanted to protect their interests.
Follow kind of that logic a little bit. So, the people that, let's see, ArchCo wants to protect their interest. So, if the other group, Interlude?
Interlude.
Interlude.
Interlude falls apart, okay, they go back through the process again and put their own site plan.
Yep.
Now, if it goes through?
Yeah, what happens?
What would be, and we approved this, I mean, is there going to be any kind of conflict of some kind of interest there? Where you, I mean, did that turn into a civil thing between the two developers or?
Yeah, and I guess kind of, you know, we might already be in that territory because I guess Interlude technically doesn't expire for another month. And ArchCo technically doesn't expire for another month, but Interlude was approved a month or two ago. And so, I guess, but like I said, in our lens?
At the City Council.
Correct, we are honoring the latest one. The latest one under our mind has legitimacy and is vested from an approved conditional use standpoint. Even though ArchCo does have approved engineering plans, if they, let's say they.
Both currently approved, right now.
They are, they are. But like, let's say ArchCo showed up and was like, hey, I'd like to move forward with this building. I want a building permit, like, have these approved engineering plans, we'd have to revise them. We would definitely check with legal about the legitimacy of them moving forward with it, having it just approved another site plan. Yeah. And it's really, it's really, and I guess like the other part of this that I guess is assurance, but the duality of it is also complicating. ArchCo is, are the people who advertise this to Interlude. Like, Interlude didn't show up here and misrepresent the situation. ArchCo gave them, gave Interlude permission to act as applicant. And so, ArchCo is involved in both of these. Like I said, this is really wonky. This is the first time this has happened to me. And one of the first times I just had to ask the question about competing site plans on the same property.
Competing site plans on the same property, different applicants. I understand trying to protect interest, though, on the project. So... And they're already currently existing.
And like I said, from our, from our lens, we honor the latest one. So, we would honor.
Right.
We would, we would honor Interlude.
Is there a condition or comment to be placed on said extension, should it be approved, that says, should Interlude pull their first permit of any kind, this goes away?
Yeah, I mean, it would, it would have to, just because, I mean, it's finite. Like, I mean, we're not going to get, yeah, so I.
So, that's going to have to happen anyway.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, so if you guys were to make a condition of it, I think that's fine. I think on our end, I think that's inherent. Like, that was, that was going to be, that's implied, for sure.
Were you saying Interlude has to pull their first permit by September fifteenth?
No, 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 no. So, Interlude since.
September fifteenth.
Oh, yeah, all right, all right, all right. So, ArchCo's latest extension runs out in September. Right, runs out in September. Interlude, who just went to City Council, like I said, a month or two ago, they got a fresh eighteen months.
Okay.
Fresh eighteen months. And so, in our mind, if we just honor the latest one, we don't have to worry about them, you know, till twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven. And so, ArchCo being in on that deal, it was something that we brought up in the pre-app meeting. It was something that we kind of talked to them about, like, eh, like, I don't, we don't know why you'd pursue this. And they were adamant that they want to protect their own interest and that they wanted, they wanted to file another extension. Even though they are currently in a deal with Interlude.
So, ArchCo is not planning on executing this conditional use, is that correct?
I don't think so. I don't.
I think with what you said, it's perfect.
Yeah. ArchCo's plan is to have something viable to sell, I guess. But I mean, they still have, it's, them not having a conditional use or approved plans to sell doesn't change the fact that they still own the land and they can sell it. So, I mean, they still have an asset. It's just not an approved conditional use with approved engineering plans, essentially.
So, they just cut it, separate them. I guess I'll, there's no real, let me just, there is. Move to approve CU twenty-two-four-zero-zero-seven.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve extension for six months of ArchCo North Dean Road development, conditional use, sorry. Roll call.
Nonette Reese?
Yes.
Dana Camp?
No.
Bill Chancellor?
No.
Jennifer Lover?
Yes.
Vanessa Echols?
No.
Jennifer Stevens?
Yes.
Oscar Mosley?
No.
Walker Davis?
No.
What was the number?
Three-five.
Three-five.
Okay.
Final.
Final item.
All right, extension of conditional use approval for Cafe Racer. All right. General location, two oh-four and two twenty up Blacker Road. It's really two twenty up Blacker Road, because they're the parcel on the inside to the east, pretty much. Okay, so, in the memo, so, this isn't like a conditional use. You don't really review the entire project. We just kind of talk about the reasons why they needed, why they're petitioning for an extension. So, they got approved, they were voted down at planning commission, went forward to City Council August, voted down at planning commission, pulled back, worked through this whole thing where they needed to come back to planning commission, expressed that they were different, did that. Then went again to planning commission, failed, I think, on a tie vote four-four, went to City Council, was approved, I think, eight-one. And they came back to planning commission because they wanted a waiver on building materials. I think that unanimously failed. And so, they got all the way through DRT. And all they needed to do was submit architectural plans. We are, I guess, in August, I think we got it like the, last week in July, first week in August. And several months ago, I reached out and I was like, hey, kind of like, what's going on with this? Like, you know, y'all are coming, it was kind of always been in the back of my mind, like, this is going to run out. Like, where is this? Like, what are they doing? Like, they just have to submit some architectural plans. And the architectural plans refer a waiver to build metal and not brick, pretty much. So, the reason that, you know, talking to their engineer for site, they've been in the process of building locations in other places. And one of the locations that they built, that was recently opened, the internal configuration did not work. They were getting a lot of complaints from their employees and they wanted to redo it. And so, excuse me, so, they were in the process of working with an architect and redoing the internal layout of the Cafe Racers. And that was pretty much where they got, like, hey, we're working on, we're working on, we're working on it. And then it was like month seventeen, and so, there are another one that expires in September. And they are pushing for a six-month extension. I think their plan is to start construction in January. So, that's where that's at. So, the reasoning was, as I said, they aspire to redo their internal design to work better for them. And then they finally got around to it, and then they submitted architectural plans. They told engineering that they're good to go on DRT today, so.
This does not require a public hearing. Commissioners?
Anybody driven by that corner?
Yes, every day.
Everybody's back in town.
Oh, yeah.
It's crazy.
Yeah.
Yep.
We had that discussion when this came up before us.
Yep.
First time.
That's not what's before us.
Okay, so, this is only to?
Extend for six months.
Extend for six months because, and the reason was they're redesigning the inside.
Yeah, like, and I guess on that, it doesn't really, people aren't obligated to extensions. Like, I mean, if you guys want to extend it, you can. If you don't, you don't have to. But I mean, that's, that's it. That was the reason that they gave me when I talked to the engineer, was that they were changing the internal design layout of what they were doing.
So, what's the impact if we, you know, deny it, though? I mean, does that mean, what does that mean in terms of their process? Do they have to come back?
Yeah, so, so, pretty much, they'd have pretty, pretty tight timeline to kind of go from, like, approved DRT plans, like, in the, in the end of the race for them. So, they'd have to get, to ratify your, to ratify your conditional use, you must get a building permit. And so, a building permit, it's like erosion control, it's several other things that you have to deal with codes that's, so, it's not just like site work and stuff, it's beyond that. So, we kind of talked about it when this initially was on the agenda, and there was some doubt that they would make it without the extension because it would expire in September.
Yeah.
But with six more months, they could take care of all that probably.
Yeah, I mean, they, yeah, I mean, they, like, you know, just eighteen, eighteen months. Here, I mean, we were here and then eighteen months went by, so. But, but yeah, they're pushing for the extension.
I'm of a mind to go.
Doesn't hurt anything to.
I don't think so. Yeah, I'm of a mind to go forward with it.
Right.
There's that.
I just don't like the project, but hey, that's personal.
Applicant would like to speak is?
Yeah, I just want to clear up a few things. So, we came before you in September twenty-four for building material waivers. We pretty much had civil plans done by the end of last year, December. We were, we had to subdivide the property, that got done in April. As Justice mentioned, they were building their second facility in Athens. When we originally submitted for this one, this was going to be their prototype store that was going to kind of be used. But, but we went through the conditional use process twice and got pushed out and delayed. So, this other store ended up being their proposed prototype that was being used. That store was being built. By the time we were trying to finalize this, they were about to submit for architectural plans. And they started running into issues that they wanted to implement before they built the third store. They didn't want to make all the, make the same mistakes. So, they were trying to use the lessons learned on that facility in here. So, they're finalizing architectural plans. Our goal is to submit in September for us to be able to have architectural plans approved. As Justice mentioned, our DRT plan's got approved this week. Finally got all that signed off with on the architectural. It was basically just waiting on revised architectural elevations. So, we got that taken care of. And so, the goal is for us to submit in September and start construction in January. So, that is, that is the goal. They've already closed on the land, so they own the land. It's, it's, it's one of those. So, just kind of slow down and want to implement the changes that they ran into to implement moving forward on this new facility. So, it's, I think the new, the new look of the building, I think, is attractive. And I think it's, it's different and unique. It's going to look good and fit in, don't get me wrong. But the uniqueness of the space in regards to their big outdoor patio and that type of stuff, I think is going to be an addition to what you guys are going to probably want to expect from other people from a restaurant space coming in this type of pedestrian here, so, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Okay, I'll move. Are there any other questions before I move? All right, I'll move to extend KCU twenty-two-four dash zero-zero-four.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It was an accident.
I will get you back.
Recations?
Yeah, so, um.
Welcomes?
Yeah, so, 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 yeah, so, thank y'alls for the first meeting. So, new commissioners and Jennifer Lover and Vanessa Echols, thank y'all. Quite the, quite the first meeting, a lot of no's, a lot of, a lot of action, a lot of action. I actually have a, actually have a question from y'all, for y'all that's, may require some debate. So, I've been, I've gotten a lot of requests as of late for variances, setbacks. I think in my inbox, I think we got one where like there was no solution other than them building flats. And I still need to respond to it, it's pretty wild. But we have a BZA meeting coming up. But we have about six, I think I got about like six to seven, I think, requests in my inbox about variances, I think, over the past like thirty to forty-five days, to setbacks and NC. And we've talked about this internally, kind of how we want to handle it. And so, there's really two solutions. And I guess kind of, I'm approaching all of this just kind of for the question purposes of, if, you know, so, pretty much, if we get multiple variances that are kind of in the same thing, kind of the same vein of thought, normally, that's reason for looking at the ordinance and going, maybe something isn't working here. What do we want to change? Kind of what's palpable for everybody, what kind of works? So, we're kind of at that point. Um, so, kinda, we're kinda at that point. And so, if you look at it, like, just kinda like the NC chart, um, it's, some of them are pretty onerous. Like, some of them have forty-two foot setbacks, some of them, and I mean, we're not talking like the, you know, NC seventy-two or something, or NC, you know, eighty-four. Um, we're talking like NC fifteen, you know, these are, you know, third of an acre lots that have these massive setbacks on them. Um, so, we looked at, kinda, we looked at the idea of, do we make it, do we make a tax recommendation and shave setbacks? Or do we create a new zoning district, like an urban single-family district, that would then kinda function the same as sidewalks? So, so for the new planning commissioner, sidewalks function as, if you want a sidewalk in your neighborhood and your, your street doesn't have one, you must convince everyone on your street that we want this sidewalk, and you can come to the city, and then the city will then go about building the sidewalk, cuz it takes everybody to be a, be in agreement of it. Um, so, we could look at creating a zoning district that would then have relaxed setbacks, but in order to rezone to it, it would require that block to do it. And so, it'd be the same thing from a use standpoint as NC. Only thing is allowed is single-family housing. The setbacks would just be relaxed, just cuz what we have happening is some people are buying these lots, or they wanna renovate them, um, and, I mean, just brutal. Like, brutal. I mean, they're coming in here, you know, they wanna do the non-conforming, you know, they can't, you can only expand a non-conformity by twenty-five percent. Um, or, you know, you only have like fifty percent of the value. And so, our thought was, if we shave the setbacks as a text amendment, um, that's all fine, well and good, don't really put any pressure on us, but what would happen is that when everyone, anyone, anyone went to do a renovation, now someone who bought in NC who didn't, who may not have been aware that we shaved them, is coming to us and going, how are they this close to my house? And now, it's like a problem on an individual level. That kinda puts staff in a, in a bind. What we would prefer, um, just kinda after talking about it on a staff level, if we created this single, like, a, the single-use district that gave people the option, and then they had to haggle amongst their neighbors, no one, no adjacent property owners would then come to us with the issue of like, well, I didn't even know about this, like, you know, how are they this close, like, you know, you, everybody's property got rezoned and got agreed to. Um, so, really, just kinda coming to you all from a philosophical standpoint, um, we could shave, we could come to you all with the text amendment of shaving these setbacks, kinda going through NC. If you guys weren't familiar, there's about thirty NC districts, there are a lot of them. Um, or we can create another zoning district, urban.
Are these variances coming from one area in town?
No, um, a lot of them are in NC, though. A lot of them are NC and in the urban area. A lot of them aren't. Um, when I say urban, I, I, I mean, I would say definitely inside the loop, um, with a concentration of them south of Sanford, inside of Dean.
Yeah.
And so, that's, so, so for everybody, I mean, you got, you know, Payne Street platted in the nineteen twenties, you got other things over there that are platted in the nineteen thirties and the forties. So, you have these little cottages that people are selling, and people wanna be in these areas. Um, but, you know, my mom's the ninth of ten, and I have no clue how they were raised in a three-bed, one-bath house, um.
Say my opinion now. Get a new zone.
Yeah.
That's what you want to do is a new zone?
Yeah, so, so, I mean, but, coming to you all, so normally, like, on these text amendments, we, we, we try to get a, get feedback from you all, and you guys would see it. It's not like, you know, we, we create it, we approve it, it's something that has to go through planning commission, has to go through council, and then that way, there's the public hearings about it, and people can know. Um, like I said, it, it wouldn't be, there'd be no conditional uses for townhomes, quads, none of that. Same thing, same uses as NC. Stays NC, pretty much, like, future land use, everything would, would be the same. The only thing that would change would be the setbacks, and then that people would have to rezone their entire block. And so, we can come up with the special development standards for it, you know, like, from a location standpoint, what qualifies as urban, like, we can talk about all of that internally. But like I said, I think on our, our end, if we shave the setbacks and it's just approved, people would then come to us with problems once they, they were like, I thought my neighbor had to be forty feet from the line, and now he's like ten, what's going on? Um, so.
Yeah.
I'd like to see that made out in a little more, with some detail that we can sit and talk about, study it a little bit, cuz that's, it sounds like kinda a big decision.
Oh, yeah, yeah, ab- absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. Um, so, yeah, I, I mean, we, we, we can kinda put that forward. Um, that, that, that's some of the stuff that, that we'll be looking at. Um, but yeah, so, so pretty much, I mean, the, the rubber's about to hit the road, we're kinda, we were fully staffed. Uh, we have our, uh, I have my budget presentation on Monday, we're gonna be talking about the new zoning ordinance audit. Um, that's gonna be one of the big projects. Oh, no, 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 no. So, that is the, that is the new, uh, sub, uh, zoning ordinance that has all of the updates from the PUD, the text amendments, and all those other things. And so.
It's a gift.
Yes. Yes, yes.
Copy table. If you get yours down, let me know.
Yeah. Um, so, yeah, 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 yeah. So, just kinda putting you guys on notice that, just kinda from a philosophical standpoint, if it's kinda what you guys would think, um, on our end, but like, whoa, that's something that we'll be working on. Um, so, there's the zoning ordinance audit, you know, there's the tables that we'll be looking at, and so, we're gonna be ramping, ramping that up. Um, kinda starting next month. We just kinda got inundated, uh, with the budget season and kinda preparing everything for that. And then, I don't know if any of you are participating in the neighborhood meeting on Saturday, but I'll, I'll be there. Um, I think, I think ten fifteen is my slot. So, we'll be talking about development and planning in Auburn. So, that, that is all I got.
All right.
All right, all right. Can someone move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.